will be received with respect to agenda items prior to full consideration of resolutions to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment will occur later in the meeting. Public comments shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. Unused time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons may speak once per public comment, period. I direct the deputy clerk to enter into the minutes of this meeting with public announcements and the advance written notice of this meeting. Commissioner Apple?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Here.
Deputy Director Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
Director Hopson?
Here. Thank you, Erin. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the public and conference meetings on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Tonight, we are recognizing Women's History Month and the contributions of some outstanding women leaders from our county who are helping great barriers inspire present and future generations. Would New Jersey Department of Human Services Commissioner Sarah Adelman please come forward? So, the rules are, you have to stand here and listen to why I read all this amazing stuff about you, okay? With a smile. Very nice to meet you. As you all know, Burlington County is home of some incredibly talented and outstanding women. Sarah Adelman is one of them. She's a member of Governor Phil's Murphy Cabinet and leads the New Jersey Department of Human Services, which is the state's largest agency. The department assists more than two million New Jersey residents, providing services for childcare, food assistance, mental illness, and programs for older adults and those with disabilities. The commissioner joined the department in two thousand and eighteen as a deputy commissioner, after previously working for the New Jersey Association of Health Plans and the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute. She is a member of the Board of Trustees of the Samaritan Healthcare and Hospice. She became department acting commissioner in two thousand and twenty-one and was confirmed by the full senate this past year. During her tenure, she's helped lead the department through immense challenges brought on by COVID-nineteen, which saw significant investments and aided millions of residents. These include services for new mothers and their children, the expansion of SNAP benefits, and increasing access to overdose reversal drugs like Narcan. We're proud of all the commissioner has accomplished and how she's added to our county's legacy of outstanding women leaders. On behalf of the Burlington County Commissioner's Board, please accept this certificate and acknowledge you as one of our outstanding women. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner Director Hopson. Thank you to the Burlington County Board of Commissioners and to your staff for the extraordinary work you do on behalf of Burlington County residents like myself. And thank you for this honor this evening. It is truly an honor to be recognized as a woman leader from Burlington County. And I am thrilled to celebrate Women's History Month this year and all of the achievements of women throughout history on whose shoulders we stand. And today, on International Women's Day, to recognize the extraordinary accomplishments of women here at our community and around the world who are doing exceptional things, breaking glass ceilings, and making the world a better place. I think one of the things that makes a truly extraordinary leader is someone who is mission-driven and people-focused. And I strive to bring those qualities to my work every day as Commissioner at the Department of Human Services. And as the Commissioner Director talked about, our agency is the largest state agency, and we have a really enormous responsibility. We provide healthcare and social services to half of New Jersey's children and more than one in three New Jersey adults. And so, those are through programs like Medicaid, SNAP, food assistance, mental health and addiction services, aging and senior services, disability services, programs for refugees, immigrants, and new Americans, and so much more. And it is truly an honor to do this work and be in public service in this way. I do it with a number of extraordinary women on my team who I also celebrate today. And I am joined by a few other VIPs. I just want to recognize for a moment tonight, my husband Court, my mom Terry, and my chief staff Jonathan Chebra, who are champions, who help me look good every day. Thank you all. And I just, I really thank you again for this recognition. And congratulations and happy Women's History Month to my fellow honorees, Ms. Gore and Councilwoman Howell. You are rock stars. Congratulations.
Thank you. With Burlington Township Councilwoman Joyce Paul, please come forward. Hello. You know, you have to stand here and listen to all this stuff. Councilwoman Paul has lived in Burlington Township for more than fifty years and has served on township council for the last eighty. In two thousand and seventeen, she became the first African-American woman to serve as Burlington Township's council president. Councilwoman Paul is a member of the Township Zoning Board and Green Team. She's also council representative to the Recreation Commission and the School Board Liaison Committee. She retired from the New Jersey Department of Corrections in two thousand and nine. While there, she joined her coworkers where she assisted at Ground Zero in New York on September eleventh. In addition to her service in government, she has been an active volunteer with the Christ Baptist Church in Burlington, its prison ministry, youth ministry, and Feed the Hungry Ministry. Councilwoman Paul has also made several missionary trips to Haiti to deliver food and supplies to hurricane victims. Councilwoman Paul embodies public service and continues to be an inspiration for all county leaders. Thank you so much. On behalf of Burlington County, please accept this certificate of acknowledgement.
Thank you. I stand on a lot of shoulders. First of all, my church, Christ Baptist Church, and Pymlon Bogan, I want to thank him, and also Burlington Township Mayor. And Councilwoman, who always support me in all the activities and things that I do. I love my high school and enjoy volunteering there as much as possible. I'm also advocate for homelessness. So, being on the ground, it is very important that we support our homelessness and the Burlington County Task Force. So, I really appreciate that. And again, I want to say, I'm newly married, so. And I want to thank my husband, who we've been in ministry together, going to Haiti and in our church. So, thank you to everybody and thank you for all the commissioners for doing such a wonderful job and for.
I would be remiss if we didn't ask May Agreed if you would like to say a few words. You have to.
Man, it's the worst. Thank you, Andrew. We're honored. We are truly honored to be here with the women honorees. I'm honored to be here before our commissioners. Thank you for all the works that you do, even though you're no longer on the same page. Great. No, no, no. One with a sense of humor. I'm one of seven, raised by my mom, my grandparents, and so I've honored women my entire life. If you follow me on Facebook, I've honored, I went from Black History Month to Women's History Month, and I think right now, if you don't mind, I just interjecting this. Unplanned, women's.
Yes, sir.
I'm a historian and collector, so just in honor of Women's History Month, please don't shut down on me. I don't know if you'll be able, you won't be able to see this from afar, but one of the items that I have in my collection is, we attended the first National Catholic Conference for Interracial Justice, Interracial Justice, Chicago, nineteen fifty-eight. What's currently on my Facebook account is. I did not plan to do this. That's the Women's voting. And it was a book published, I believe, and it goes back to what women's suffrage and voting was. I wish you hadn't called on me, so I wouldn't do it. And I'm going to take up time from the women honorees, but it is important to me to share the fact that we have, I can't find it, but it just goes back to honoring women, the struggles that women went through, where the Constitution said, oh, men are created equal, did not include women, and among others. And I'm just really pleased to be here among women, raised by a woman. I was not blessed with any daughters, however, but, you know, God knew what He was doing when He didn't give me daughters, as my sister said. Congratulations. Thank you. Keep up the great work. I am so proud to be here with Joyce Paul, so-called her Joyce Howe, and we're just blessed to be in the presence of these young ladies that assist in running our township and those different initiatives that you heard and listed thus far. So, thank you very much. I'm sure the board will never follow me again. I'm trying my business, but I'll get that picture to you.
I'm going to turn things over now to Commissioner Apple.
Commissioner Director, Casey Gore, would you please join me? We did. It was a big night. So, I will not read the litany of your accomplishments, which I'm sure are long and distinguished, other than the fact that you have been teaching eighth grade at Morristown High School for thirteen years?
Yes.
Which is an accomplishment for sure, eighth graders, right?
Yes.
So, we do thank you for that. But, we have a theme tonight of mission-driven women who are helping their community in extraordinary ways. And Ms. Gore, with her personal tragedy, when she lost her son Jayden to brain cancer about a year ago?
February first, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
And so, she has used her energy and her frustrations and her emotions, and along with her partners, have turned it into a community good in the Jaden Strong Foundation.
Yes.
Well, this is phrase, all gas, no brakes. So, you have been all gas, no brakes, in order to raise money with the Jaden Strong Foundation, in order to benefit families like yours who have gone through such a personal tragedy, because you know what they need, and that they need support, and they need resources, and they need little things, food, blankets, games, different things like that. And she's doing extraordinary work with her energy coming out of the tragedy. And so, we are pleased to honor you this Women's History Month for all of the good work that you do. Please accept this on behalf of the New Jersey County.
Excuse me? Oh, sorry. This is the one for Sharon. Thanks. Would you like to say? Yes. First of all, thank you so much, Commissioner Apple, and everyone that I'm going to meet tonight. When I first got the email, I thought it was spam, because I said, what is this? Why am I being invited to this? Because I don't feel like, I feel like I'm doing something from my heart, just for my son and his honor, but I'm truly grateful to be in the presence, not just of all the women, but everybody in the room tonight, and just having this chance to speak. I use the word often that was given to me right after my son passed away, and that word is unapologetic, because I need to be unapologetic in what I'm doing in his honor. And no matter how scary it is or what I have to do, I'm just, I have to do it from my heart for my son. He passed after a thirteen-month battle with leukemia, leukemia, and it came out of nowhere. So, it's scary, and he was eighteen. So, I'm driven by passion, this foundation that we made, we made it about a month after his service. And so far, we've been able to help a few families in need. During our battle, I had to take a week of absence from work, and my husband's, we were in the middle of a pandemic, my husband's gym got shut down, so we relied on foundations to help us get by, just to pay electric bills or put food on the table. We have six hundred children. So, when Jayden passed, I said, how can we honor him in the best possible way? And I said, we have to help other families. So, the Jaden Strong Foundation does that. We have fundraisers to help raise funds to give to families in New Jersey and Pennsylvania that are battling a pediatric brain cancer diagnosis. And it fills us up. It just gives me a purpose every day to turn my pain into something good. So, I'm here, and I'm grateful to be here. Thank you. And if I could be of service in any other way, I'm learning. Senator Troy Singleton is paving the way, really, for me. He's been so great, and I'm learning from everyone. So, I hope to see you all again soon, and I'm just grateful. Thank you. Yep, stay with us. We're going to take a group photo. All the honorees come back up, please. Commissioner O'Connell, congratulations. You're good. Congratulations. Do you want to open the event? And we'll pass the message. Oh, whichever. Yes. Are we too far apart? Thank you again. Congratulations.
We will now move on to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak who have any other comments will have a chance to use their name in the meeting. When it's your turn, speak, please state your full name and address for the record. As a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment. We have two folks signed up for public comments on agenda items. Our first person is Mr. Luis Lopez.
My name is Luis Lopez, live in ninety-eight, and I never tried my hobby in New Jersey. First, I want to say Happy Women's International Day, especially to you, Julie Schaub, a strong Brooklyn County woman.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have three agenda items. First one is agenda item age three, age fourteen, and age twenty-three. Do you satisfy for me, just that three?
So, age three was originally accepted as a single audit, so we have no findings in our audit, so we're just accepting that as a point of process. Age fourteen, we're just amending the contract title Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Prevention. So, there was just a small amendment for that. And age twenty-three?
Sure. It's, we're just finally to make sure that items seized from, legally seized from people we can share in the venue under that from the title.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have next one, Mrs. Gary Barbarian, or I'm sorry.
You're learning.
I am.
Deborah, one thirty, Winston, West Hampton. I had comments about three of the agenda items. My comment is, I find those newsletters to be helpful, so I would urge you to vote yes to have those printed and delivered. My only other question about that was, does the printing cover like a Braille type of format for that flyer? I wasn't sure.
I don't think so. It does not. It does not. That's something interesting. We'll take note of that.
Just wondering. The next one is age twenty-six. The only comment I had about this, it's kind of new to me, the water allocation credit, if you could just give me, I don't know, ten or fifteen seconds on some context of what that is, if you're interested.
Are you familiar with carbon credits?
Somewhat.
It's similar to carbon credits. I had that on this a couple of years ago, yeah. So, it's very similar to carbon credits, it's sort of the, Mary Cotten.
Yeah.
Mary Cotten, you want to help us out here for Mr. Conservation?
The Board of Commissioners is actually a water credit, water allocation credit exchange. These credits were given to commissioners as a result of orders by the DEP to cut back withdrawals of water from the Potomac River, the ninety-oth waterfall, which is the major waterfall supplying drinking water to Burlington County. So, we have these credits to give out to those that need it in the transportation plans for the credit board. Those credits are given to the agricultural community at no fee. This is an agricultural user that has requested credits so that he can drill a well to irrigate his box.
She said it so much better than I did.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's good to know. Very helpful to hear and understand. So, thank you. And then, on age twenty-nine, I think it's terrific that people want to give their time, treasure, and talent in a particular year, this donation to the animal shelter. I would just urge you to support and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments on agenda items? Do we have any other comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I will now close this portion of public comment. Now, we move on to resolutions. I would like to approve a motion to approve resolution H-one through H-eighteen for unanimous consent. Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolution H-nineteen through H-twenty-two for unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Apple?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions H-twenty-three through H-twenty-seven for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Motion by Apple, second by Polian. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolutions H-twenty-eight through H-thirty-one for unanimous consent, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Do we have any questions from the media? Do we have any questions from the media? Seeing none, we will now move on. We will now begin our public comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and they speak only once per public comment portion. When it's your turn, please state your full name and address for the record. We have three people signed up. We'll start with the folks that signed up. Our first person is Ms. America Phillips.
Good evening, everybody. My name is America Phillips. I live in one fifteen Tennessee, Delaware, Brownsville, New Jersey, or eight oh one When I attend last meeting, Commissioner Hopson stated to me, if I want to found the more information for my questions, I can refer to the Commissioner's office, and they will direct me to different offices. I did up my homework yesterday, thanking Mrs. Hopson, but I would be appreciated if you didn't tell me before until I asked where I, when the answers, because I've been in those meetings for a long time, okay? But I said thank you, because that will answer all my questions for, I even have the DOT engineer, Mr. Will Chaiter, he also called me in reference where my questions were, and he will be looking into, in reference to the five thirty in East, in seventy, seventy East or West, whatever, he will be looking into, because he stated to me that that will be a state road. Well, I am aware, I know this is a state road, but he will pass information to the state in my question where I asked him. I asked in reference to the Berlin, they direct me to the Berlin also. Well, I was not very happy when I received a call, they didn't call me. I called them, but the only thing I could get from them was the bus schedule. I found out they don't work in weekends. And my question were about who another person will be in effect for the people who depend on public transportation, because not everybody wants to fight people sometimes that are working weekends, and they depend on the public transportation. But I was not able to get an answer, because they take just only the schedule. That's the only thing I will pursue it in the future. But I also try to get attention in reference to the four mile circle in spring, late, what about in June, seven. And DOT stated to me that he will look into and see what he can do in the future. And thank you, and I see you as willing to it. Have a nice weekend, and congratulations to all of you. Celebrated Women's. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next person is Mr. Luis Lopez.
I have just two questions. Have you awarded for the Figure Skating two thousand and twenty-three Isabelle Alon, have you won like an award, or can we have her as a guest for the next pre-order meeting? Are you able to reach her?
I'm not familiar with the figure skater.
She's from Mount Holly.
I don't know.
Yeah, I want to know. I want to know if you could, oh, you got, try to contact her, try to have her in our next pre-order meeting. I would love to see that. I tried, I'll say, I'll be leaving a message, but for the person, yeah, I said, it's kind of busy, I don't know if the entire free to came, reach her to have a, you know, a guest.
Yeah, thank you for that recommendation.
And we had like several events, like the street fair in Bonnington City, two thousand and twenty-three, May twenties, we have Bonnington Coin Show, March twelfth, Bonnington Museum, large, thirty-two. You know, a whole bunch of great meetings that, you know, anybody could go to. Yeah, I appreciate it, that kind of tour, amazing time practice parade. The best thing about that parade, I have some kind of, Bonnington kind of resident that came to work, not to my job, came, I said, and thank you, appreciate it, for the live video and the four K video, you know, appreciate what I do. I'm just a journalist, like to learn. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. All right. Our next person that we have signed up is Mr. Barbarian.
Yes, you're welcome. You're great. Deborah, one thirty, Winston, West Hampton. Last night in West Hampton, our township, we sworn in a new police officer, Eric Sweeney. I'm not sure if your board gets those notices when we're bringing in new police officers to our township. Might be kind of nice. They do a hard job. I'm sure it would be very well received by them for your well wishes and congratulations. So, if you're so inclined, perhaps you may want to reach out. It's up to you. Just wanted to mention that. And then, not to be maudlin, but today, seven years ago, Sean Cullen was tragically killed. Our township, we've honored him with naming a street behind our municipal building, Culloden Way. And I went back and I looked at the funeral notices, the obituaries, and in lieu of flowers, his family requested that folks honor Sean by making a donation to the Burlington County Animal Shelter. So, just something for you to think about. I would like it, maybe, if you would think about possibly posting somewhere in the foyer, the entrance to the county animal shelter, a photo, the bio of Trooper Cullen, or I'm going to do a whole week, maybe just do it on March the eighth, so people can learn a little bit about him and his commitment. He served as a police officer here in Mount Holly, as well as West Hampton, before he entered on duty with the state police. There's a nice bio from the New Jersey State Police website, beautiful photo, a little bit about his life and his service, so just something for you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I will close this portion of public comment. We will now move on to comments from commissioners. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Director. Congratulations to the honorees today, Commissioner Sarah Adelman, Councilwoman Joyce Powell, and our educator, teacher from Morristown, Casey Gore. Obviously, you know, these are just select few that we recognize, but we know the work that all women do, you know, is worthy of recognition. So, congratulations again to all those, and glad to be part of this ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to thank those of you who took the time to be with us this evening, and Mr. Barbarian, appreciate your comments. We have a lot of wonderful people that make donations to our animal shelter, and we're very, very appreciative of that. I too would like to add my congratulations to those we honored tonight for Women's History Month. Everybody get home safe. Everybody get home safe. That's all I have, Director.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Epple?
Thank you, Director. Yes, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out. Thank you to all of our department heads and those who work for the county. And I also do enjoy acknowledging wherever I go how many women work in positions of power in the local county. And I can relate to that, from our administrator to our CFO, our solicitor, our prosecutor, first assistant prosecutor, department heads, resource conservation, human services, our head of communications, our commissioner director. And I know I'm leading a lot out. And we have, I think, an extraordinary number of women in management and positions of power in this county. And I think we stand out statewide. And I'm proud of that. So, proud of all of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Director. Congratulations to all those honored this evening. Once again, I am humbled to see the type of leadership that we are growing in Burlington County. And I'm very glad to see that our director chose to honor these people. I want also to extend my sincere gratitude to all of the women who support us here at the county, in our office, in our leadership. And thanks to all of our department heads, who, as I say, make us look good every day. Really appreciate everything that you do. And last, I want to thank some folks. We had a great Irish parade Saturday. Over the last couple of years, I've been able to attend it. And I have to say that I thoroughly enjoy it. I like seeing the people that come out and love giving candy to the kids. And just want to thank our office, Charlene, Dave, Hal. You guys really did a great job supporting us, and I really appreciate that. Everybody be safe going home. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. So, I'll be brief. I echo all the comments from my colleagues. Happy International Women's Day to everyone. And thank you so much for coming to our meeting and, you know, doing your civic duty, keeping us responsible and holding us accountable. Thank you. That concludes my comments. I am now looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?